Let me begin by saying that I don't usually write thanksgiving. My preaching style is a bit differently than reading off of a paper, but today I wanted to make sure that I was cognizant of my time and yours. It is a privilege to be with you this evening in light of the headlines going on in the world. First, I want to express my gratitude to this group, who despite volatile political climate continues to serve with dignity and respect. It's not an easy time, and I'm sure we're all shocked by the events of this weekend. What a way to make national news. I much prefer when we make headlines with a generosity like the collective or solar cars traveling across Texas. We can't control the media, the news, or what gets published even in our own Watertown Daily Times. We control ourselves, our actions, and our language. What we often fail to see is that we gather here for the same goals. Each one of us wants a safe, healthy place to live and work. We want our emergency responders to have the best equipment and space, and we want our community to thrive and make news for the ingenuity we use in repurposing old places and revitalizing our downtown. We want to be known that even in the face of opposition and disagreement, we can still gather together and provide a safe place. I want to bless you by giving you a little bit of our Maravian heritage. Now, most of you might not know what a Maravian is, but I don't expect you to because we are small, but might be. And what Maravians pride themselves in is that we don't get along. That's not always something to be proud of, but the reality is that we don't have to get along, to serve and to faithfully be with one another. So I invite us at this time to bow our heads to the one whomever we believe in or to no one that we believe in. We invite this space, this safe space, to be a time of opinions and expressions, to be a time of listening ears and noble voices, to be a time that all opinions matter and that the collective matters more. I think sometimes we fail to see that in sacrifice we are serving, and that includes sometimes sacrificing what we personally might think or value for the better of the whole. So representatives, we appreciate you being here, and we ask the blessings, the calm this meeting, and the care and gifts that you provide. We ask that there be peaceful discussion and a focus on the same goal that we all have here, the goal of a safe, healthy community, to live, to work, to raise a family in whatever that looks like. You do have an agenda this evening, to be loved, to be accepted, and to be known. I'm grateful for this community and that even in spite of our challenges, we continue to value a safe space for people to be loved, accepted, and known. May the blessings upon this meeting ripple out more than we may know. Amen.
Amen.
With that, I am going to call to order our Tuesday, August 1st Comic Council Meeting. Megan, will you please take the role? Davis?
Here.
Lampy?
Here.
Board?
Here.
Here.
Is he virtual? He is virtual, yep. Barts?
Here.
Blankey?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Wetzel?
Here.
Mouldenhauer?
Here.
Very good. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The first item on our agenda is the minutes of the council meeting from July 18th. Any comments or questions on any of those minutes? All right. The next item on our agenda is our comments and suggestions from citizens present. Before I open that up, I have a hunch that that mic isn't on. Stephen, can you take it? Thank you. Thankfully Pastor Reverend Vanderlinen's voice projects, but we'll make sure we get that turned on. So as I mentioned before the meeting started, we do have an opportunity to hear from those of you present here today. Anyone that would like to comment, the clerk will call you up one by one. So if you haven't filled out a form, please make sure that you do that so we can get you called up. We do have three minutes. Our finance director is the keeper of our time, so you'll hear his phone go off, and I would just ask that you do your best to respect that time. And again, just as a reminder, if someone has said something that you would like to support, you can certainly use your time, or you can go up to the microphone and just say that you agree with what they stated, or disagree with what they stated for that matter. So with that, who do we have?
Bentley Owen Hill.
I was driving to California. I had the great pleasure of going out there a lot, around the Pistachio and Almond Groves, by Monterey, Fresno, and Seaside. It's fun. But I swam down the coast, down towards Southern California, was driving near Riverside. I turned the radio on, and I heard on the radio that the day before, within the last two days, that a 18-year-old male had gone into a 14-year-old, into a high school locker room and undressed, nude, in front of 14-year-old girls. And one of the girls instinctively rushed and beat the pulp out of her. There was another incident when I was there, Dodger Stadium, thousands of Hispanics protesting Sisters of Perpetual Indulgence, a bigoted hate group mocking Catholics, thousands of Hispanics gathering at Dodger Stadium because they were going, the Sisters of Perpetual Indulgence were going to be recognized at, before the game. Barely anybody was there fortunately. Bigoted hate group. These incidents were brought by radical trans activist LGBTQ groups. Now, last year before July, the July Pride in the park, Emily stood on the north, Mayor Emily stood on the north patio, northwest patio, and we have it on recording, somebody was there and recorded it. She told the leader of the Unity Project, Watertown's getting better. No due diligence, sloppy governance. You don't even know who the Unity Project is or the founder and what they believe. They are a radical trans activist LGBTQ group that is in a network loose and tight throughout this nation. They had how-to-state help. And in fact, they support, they support the Unity Project. They picked that word as a cover. They support the laws that are being proposed in Virginia and in Illinois and California. I know they say they don't, but they are hooked in, and you need to do your due diligence and understand what's going on here in Watertown. They support the laws that will give parents a felony and criminal charges because they will not allow, they will not affirm their child at a younger age and want them the way to adult if they are going to regender or whatever. States, Virginia, Illinois, California, other states are proposing this. This is the group that's in Watertown. And I might say Sisters of Perpetual Indulgence were there last year in the park here, they were there this year. Our mayor was walking around the park with them there. Bigoted hate groups here. That's who the Unity Group is tied to. They are radical, and the sad thing is one radical group like that drew in another radical group, the Nazis. Disgusting. The Nazis are disgusting. We shouted them away, said, "Get out of here." We were there with gays against grooming, gays against grooming, opposing the Unity Project, which is radical.
Sorry, you're at your, you're at your three minutes.
Well, I'll be done in about 20 seconds.
Thank you.
We are demanding representation from the Watertown City Council. We want votes. We don't want three people with park permits. We have this kind of stuff going on, this radical group that has not been vetted drawing in another radical group. We need our children, our daughters and our families protected in this town. They weren't vetted. I don't like to be this way. I've never been at city council meetings until this, and you know that, Mayor McFarland. But this is ridiculous what's going on. Unity Group needs to be known for what it is. It's not unity. It's a radical LGBT trans activist group like what was going on in California. They're bringing it to our schools, our school bathrooms, and our locker rooms for our girls. We want representation. We want votes from the city council if we'll allow park permits that allows this stuff to go on and be brought in and drawn in.
Samuel Owen Now.
One more time.
Samuel Owen Now.
Okay, gotcha. Organized alphabetically from O to, we'll see where it goes. I just wanted to restate, there was a gay group there, right? Gays Against Groomers. This protest was not against homosexuals, regardless of what people believe about morality. This wasn't about people engaging in voluntary action with one another. This is about people sexually abusing kids by exposing them to sexual fetishes. This is about people bringing in hate groups, people who mock Christianity by having pole dances on a cross while a man pretends to be crucified. This is about that. This is about evil, okay? Not personal moral decisions. This is about active evil, and it's only going to go farther down. That's what happens when you give up and you let people do whatever they want to, when you have underage people doing drag performances in front of children and adults. It's sick. You can't let these things happen. It's very obvious, guys, and it doesn't have anything to do with gays. It has to do with people who want to groom children into sexual lifestyles.
Thank you.
Ken Stolar.
Ken Stolar, Watertown, Wisconsin. You know, I just wanted to make a few comments. Number one, the woman that was up here earlier talked about safety, and, you know, we have to use key words here because that's important, but I'm concerned about the safety of Watertown. I'm concerned about the safety when, when this kind of group draws that kind of group. It's not safe. It's not safe for our children. It's not safe for our community. It's not inviting. It puts people in a dangerous place, in a frightening place. It's not good for our community overall. And so number one. Number two, I want to say this. If we're gonna, if we're gonna, I like to speed. Can we just get rid of the speed limit? I mean, can we just make it a lawless nation so we can all do what we want? Wouldn't that be better because we can all do what we want as long as we love each other? Think about if we went that far, what kind of community that we would have, right? I mean, that's the reality of it, but we can't because we all understand instinctively what our society would become if we didn't have rules and regulations and draw the line somewhere. And so we invoked God. Is it a game, or do we believe in God? We said one nation under God, so define who God is. He's not space. He's the Creator, the Creator of all things, that we're all going to give account to at one point or another. And I hear the big hoopla is, "Love, love, 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 love." God loves everyone. That's true. He does. The scripture says, and most of you are probably church-going people, the scripture says, "God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son, that whosoever believes in it would not perish." But believing is not mental acknowledgement. Believing is following after. And do we follow after? Most of us go to church. If you go to church, what's the purpose of the church? Is it to shape our thoughts and our belief system to have a biblical worldview? It should be because the Word of God is the perfect constitution for every society to function and be blessed in every way, morally, economically, agriculturally, everything, getting along person to person, and then on top of that, we have the blessing of God that comes with it. But what is our belief system? What's the purpose of the church? And if we go to church, why is our belief system so off? Maybe we have to reconsider what we really believe and who we really acknowledge as God because we have a big problem here. And if we continue to allow everybody to just do whatever they want, it won't be long and we'll have a lawless society. And then I'll say, "Well, you can't, you can't judge me because God loves me. Even though I do wrong, I can, I have the right to do wrong." But we don't. God loves everyone, that's for sure. The Word of God says that. But that doesn't mean that God accepts everyone because he doesn't. Right now is our, is our window of grace to turn our hearts to Christ. On Judgment Day, that's when God will separate, right? But let it be known, there will be a day of separation.
Thank you.
Jim Orin-Water.
Jim Orin-Wat?
I'm sorry. The address, there's something 213?
Yes.
Drenwater, sorry.
Dren, sorry.
Good evening, folks. My name is Jim Drenwater. I'm a resident Watertown. So I didn't really have anything prepared. I just had a feeling, I went to the last school board meeting and I saw how that went, and so I had a feeling it was going to go very similar here, kind of getting that vibe. So I just wanted to talk about a couple of things. You know, I think as a common counsel for Watertown, you guys represent everybody that lives in Watertown. And while I might be the minority in this room, I don't think that I'm necessarily the minority of residents in Watertown. I don't attend the same churches that these folks do. I don't hold the same views that most of them do. And I would urge you to look at the crowd here and ask yourself, who does the future of Watertown really belong to? Does it belong to the people who've lived here for like 30, 40 years and who are only going to be around for another 20 or 30 years? I mean, I hope it's more, I really do, for each and every one of you. But I have four children. I have four children that I'm raising here in Watertown, who are growing up in Watertown, who are going to live in Watertown, and I feel like the future of Watertown belongs to them. This past weekend, I brought my children to the Pride Festival in the park because I felt like it was a good place to bring them for exposure to other people, other, you know, sides of life. I have a daughter who's on the LGBTQIA spectrum, and she doesn't find a lot of acceptance here in Watertown, and you can probably guess why based on the way the people are already talking in this meeting tonight. I brought her there, and for the first time in a long time, she felt like she was accepted. She felt like she had a place to be, where people loved her and cared about her for who she was. She didn't have to fake being something else. And people here want to act like, you know, that brought in, you know, the Nazis and things like that. I would say that it's very difficult to stand up in front of people and talk unless you have something that you believe very strongly in. And I really feel like those kinds of groups wouldn't be attracted if we didn't have so many people who are speaking out against it already. A lot of these folks stood on the same side of the fence as those Nazis, protesting the same event with a lot of the same beliefs. And that's not the direction that Watertown is going in. I mean, if you ask any of the kids, if you ask any of the children, if you talk to any of the teachers in the town, that's not the way that Watertown is going. These children deserve to be treated with kindness and respect for who they are, and it's our duty as a community to help raise them and help them be that way. And we shouldn't force them to go to a church. We shouldn't shove our beliefs down their throat. I let my children believe what they want to believe, and that's what we should be I saw a lot of hate on Saturday, and, you know, it was pretty darn clear when I walked in this room and people were practicing speeches, and then they just stopped talking when I saw my shirt. There's a lot of people here that don't believe the same things that I believe in, but I believe in the future of this city. I think it's a great city, and I want to say thank you to the police department in Watertown for keeping everybody safe. I appreciate what you guys did. Thank you.
Thank you. One second, Mark. Are we out of forms? Is that what you guys were looking for?
Yeah, they were looking for papers, so I can.
Megan, do you want to?
I can just move them out to the.
Yeah, we can just put them in the hallway. Thank you. All right.
Gene Schmidt.
Well, with all due respect, sir, I have three or four sons, and I hate everything that Nazism stands for. I'm a Christian. I stand for Christ. I don't agree with men dressing as women. I never will as a Christian. I'll never agree that's good for our youth or our kids or your kids. I follow the Bible. We say we're Christians or we're a God-fearing city, then let's follow the God of the Bible. I don't hate the people. I help a lot of homeless, hurting gay and transgender people. I have a food pantry that helps 500 people a week. I get calls from them when they're broken, destroyed, mentally vanquished, and I'm the Christian that helps them. I get more calls a week in Watertown than most churches in a month from the police, the county. So to say that Christians that try to defend the Word of God are haters is a lie of the devil, a big lie that has no merit in what's in my heart. But I don't agree with where Watertown's going. The event itself attracted the Nazis to come. Nazis that I don't agree anything with still found men dressing as women and doing drag show events reprehensible. Every Christian in Watertown should think it's reprehensible and come out in force, in love, and say, "This hurts the heart of God." As long as I'm living and breathing, I want to defend God's Word. I feel for your daughter, and maybe one day she'll call Gino for help, but I'm a Christian that shows the love of Jesus. I also believe in the transforming power of Christ, that he sets the captive free as he did me. My life was a wreck until the Lord changed my heart. Where's our city going? It cost a lot of money. The amount of money taxpayers had to pay for this whole event Saturday, I urge Unity Project to foot the bill, 100%, and not me. I urge the leaders of Watertown to defend what's decent in front of God, the God you pledge allegiance to. I urge you to change the laws in Watertown and shut down reprehensible drag shows and drag story reading hours. Shut it down before it becomes the Goliath you'll never get rid of. Shut it down before God has to punish, starting with leaders who he says he will deal with that allow evil into the gates of our city. To thought that Christians are bigots? No. I work with the persecuted church. I work with a pastor who survived the elected chair twice in Romania to defend the gospel. People die for what they believe in, and it's a value worth believing in. Jesus is worth dying for. The greatest power of the gospel is living for Christ, standing up when you're in the firing squad of opposition and saying, "At all costs, I defend God and the Word of God." I don't want to see one little child in Watertown stumble and being taught this lifestyle's okay. If you with a clear conscience, anyone here thinks Jesus is okay with that, you don't know Jesus.
Mr. Schmidt, your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Before we move to the next person, before we move to the next person, can someone from our team make sure those brakes are on? The podium keeps moving, and I don't want anyone to. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Thank you, too. Well, there was, I know you recently are in recovery, and I just saw it going, and I just was like, can someone, yeah, can someone please stop that thing from rolling before we, before we lose it?
Stacy Estudio.
Estudio.
Wisconsin Legislature 944, Crimes Against Sexual Morality. 944.21, Obscene Material or Performance, D, Obscene Performance Live Exhibition Before an Audience. Subsection 2, Under Contemporary Community Standards, describes or shows sexual conduct in a patent offensive way. Example, encouraging children to put dollar bills in the drag people's lingerie. Wisconsin Statute 948.055, Sexual Exploitation of a Child. Whoever intentionally causes a child who is not attained 18 years of age to view or listen to sexually explicit conduct may be penalized as provided in sub 2. 948.11, Exposing a Child to Harmful Material or Harmful Descriptions or Narrations. Our police officers did not only voluntarily, under the direction of our city leaders, protect the offenders of these laws, as well arrested and unlawfully detained four Christians, two of whom were minors, exercising their First Amendment right of freedom of speech. While unlawfully detaining these persons, the Unity Project people and/or supporters stole the signs of the protesters. Our police department arrested and gave citation to a protester that I can only identify as AC for signage, yet the other side could steal ours. There is video footage of a Unity Project supporter physically attacking somebody in the presence of police officers, to which no action was taken. This event has brought the attention of a national hate group whom has never been known to make an. an appearance in our city, putting all of the citizens of Watertown in danger. The Watertown Daily Times has become a personal blog and spotlight for Trent Kengas, and is a gross misrepresentation of the facts and events of Saturday. Christians and the protectors of the children are being called haters of the LGBTQ community, yet the city and the police department direct the homeless and hungry of the LGBTQ community to our church and one of our church leaders. We accept them with open and loving arms and try to help if possible, but we don't have to turn a blind eye to the sin or accept it. First Corinthians fourteen thirty-three, "For God is not the author of confusion, but of peace, as in all of the churches of the saints." So many religious leaders in this community were giving their blessings to this mass confusion to which they have no authority to do, and this disgusting, perverted display of a children's fair. Even under the pressure of being force-fed by our city leaders and government to partake and uphold this agenda, I do not and will not involve myself with this illusion the LGBTQ community is perpetrating, because that's all it is, an illusion. Other surrounding communities are holding their drag events and enclosed venues with legal consenting adults only. Yet Watertown city officials supported Mr. Trent Kengas and his delusion to sexually exploit our children. If I were to dress in lingerie and lure children with the promise of stories and face painting, then to put on a sexual dance gyrating my pelvis, I most certainly would be taken to jail with a slew of charges. The taxpaying citizens are being strong-armed into funding the support for such an absurd agenda being forced by the LGBTQ community, which is in stark contract to the city's motto, which in part reads, "That is rich in small-town values." Mark my words, God is going to put a judgment on Watertown because they couldn't leave the kids alone, and you not only allowed it, you supported it. Thank you for your time.
Jackie Ohm?
Say that again.
Jackie Ohm?
Hello, my name is Jackie Ohm. I live in Watertown, Wisconsin. And I wanted to let you know that in addition to the circus they observed on Saturday with Antifa coming, there was a group there called Homosexuals Against Pedophilia. I've never met them before. I met their leader, who drove all the way from Kansas City to come and support his group from Milwaukee. The other person that was notable at Saturday's meeting was State Representative Janel Branchen. And I recognized her, and I said, "Janel, you're from Anomie Falls. You're a housewife. What are you doing here?" And she said, "I am here to support the homosexuals against pedophilia." Now, I think it's really important that our state representatives are taking note of what is going on in Watertown. And I can tell you that I don't think they agree with the grooming and pedophilia that we are seeing in this town. Kids that are, I guess, getting used to this idea think that it's normal. It's not. Janelle and I had a great conversation. I'm a retired medical personnel. And we talked about what happens when they encourage these kids to take hormones to change their genders, and the consequences of those hormones are not reversible. You have to be on hormones for the rest of your life. The hormones cause mental problems just because of what it's trying to do to the body, to make it do something different besides what the XX and XY chromosomes dictate in the body. And she told me something that I did not know, is that when these children start these hormones at a young age, they're stunted in their growth, so they always stay looking young, which of course is what the groomers and pedophiles like. So that was really interesting. In the, in addition, I'd like to thank the Watertown Police Department for creating order out of what could have potentially been chaos. But I would like to say that I noted that there were officers that were not from this area. Same thing happened last year. So I would like an accounting from the council, displayed prominently on our state, on our city website and in the newspaper, of how much it costs to bring in the extra security, and how much it costs to bring in the extra fencing, to put it up, to take it down. That information should be public record prominently displayed. And I also agree with, if a group is going to rent our main city park, the whole thing, I don't care that it's the whole thing. I care about the fact that they're requiring extra services that we, the citizens, have not agreed to. And when you have a wedding in the park, or you have something else, you don't usually require the extra security services nor the extra fencing. So I think that as citizens, we're demanding accountability from the council, and, and we wanna know what this is costing us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trent Kengas?
Trent Kengas. There are a couple chairs in the front row if people need to sit down yet.
Not much of a public speaker. I just need to pull up my statement. Oh, sorry, sorry. Hello, I'm Trent Kengas, the president of Unity Project Watertown. I'd like to make a statement regarding the hate group that appeared in Watertown on Saturday. Everyone in this room is a citizen of the city or the area, and we are all doing what we feel is best for the comput-, for the community and our loved ones. I support the rights of all citizens within Watertown to have a fair and equal exchange of ideas. However, the hate group was not even made up of individuals from this area. I have always believed that speaking to those that disagree with you is important, so long as they are willing to come to the table respectfully. They were not here to have, the hate group was not here to have a dialogue, but to stoke fear, distrust, and division amongst our community. One of my favorite statements about having a respectful dialogue goes something like, "You're only ready to have a discussion once you can summarize your opponent's stance, and they will look you in the eyes and say, 'Yes, that is what I believe.'" It doesn't mean you agree with their stance. It's just that you have enough of an understanding and empathy to, um, to see from another person's point of view. We need to be reminded that we are all citizens of the same city. We're all neighbors to one another. We should not let those who stoke fear and hatred show up and cause us to lose sight of this. We can disagree with each other's choices and beliefs, but I feel it is critical for everyone to attempt to understand all people, not just the ones you agree with. Everyone in the city is a friend or a family to someone. Therefore, we can't lose sight of people's humanity and given to us versus them mentalities. We are all humans. We all deserve love. We all deserve to be heard and understood. Thank you.
Sue Christian?
Christian Watertown. I know these were kinda covered, but I just wanna bring it up again. How many cops did we bring here for this event?
This is, this is gonna seem weird, but we can't speak back to you. I apologize.
And they were on overtime. How many LGBTQ people were there that required that many cops? What, a hundred people that attended that, and they took over the whole park? What is the cost of setting up those barricades? And what is the total cost to our taxpayers for this whole thing? It's not in the paper. You just can't find it. I wanna know what the total cost is to us taxpayers. Thank you.
Sarah Zarling?
Hello, I'm Sarah Zarling. I live here in Watertown. I'm dressed like this because I just went and saw the Barbie movie with my two boys, and I'm Zumba Pride Barbie. So, I gotta tell ya, I don't have anything prepared. I just wrote down a little note here. I'm really disturbed by, I was already disturbed by the hate directed toward my friends at Unity Project, from people who just don't understand what's, what they're actually doing, and feel like they have a right to tell others how to live their lives. But the hate in this room is tangible, and people clearly don't wanna try and understand and see things from the other point of view, like Trent was saying. You can see and feel people's reactions. It's important to understand that the only reason why there was so much security that was needed was because of the hate that is directed toward people like the people in the Unity Project, who are just trying to live their lives and allow their children to be who they are. And just because people don't agree with that, or understand it, or using their religion to justify why they think it's wrong, that's the reason why there's a need for security. People would just let people live their lives and mind their business, then, and pray for them, and don't show up to the park if you don't wanna be there. Then there wouldn't be a need for extra security and taxpayer money that you're talking about. And, you know, yeah, too, just, uh, it's, it's hard for me to feel like I'm walking among people in this community who have such hate toward other people like me, who just want everybody to just be happy and loved for who they are, and feel like they can express who they are. The opening sermon or speech or whatever, that was really nice and uplifting, and people were laughing at it. So I just, I feel like it's obvious who's very broken and who needs to really reevaluate themselves and their lives, and who's actually coming from a place of love and acceptance. I think those things are pretty easy to see. And I definitely wanna live in a world where I see and feel more love and acceptance, and not so much hate and division, and people thinking that they have a right to tell other people how to live their lives. Just focus on yourself. We all have work and growth we need to do. Normalize talking about your feelings, 'cause we're all human, and we all carry our heartbreaks around every day, and we're all just doing our best. And so, seriously, people just love each other.
Linda Koffeld?
So I'm Linda Koffeld. I'm from Watertown, Wisconsin here. Oh, I echo everything that Gino said. It was about two years ago when our family and grandchildren attended a free magic show sponsored by a store. The show started, the magician, a Christian, made a special effort to include the children in his tricks. With excitement in the air, hands were raised, kids were selected for the next trick. As they stood on the small stage, he learned their names, asking them for their help. Nods of affirmation, and the show went on. He explained to his volunteers what they had to do to help with the magic trick. Pure excitement reigned, and each one understood his task. Pull this, close this, hold this. And as the tricks proceeded, nothing went as expected, bringing much laughter and amazed, amazement to, "How did he do that?" As the show moved on, new children were selected for the next trick. It was obvious this man loved children, and he had spent forty years learning, practicing, perfecting, and performing these tricks. He had talent. He respected the kids, often referring to them by their names, at times giving them a hug for their help. The conclusion of this example is, this very fun, family entertainment brought much joy, laughter, and enthusiasm from both the children, parents, grandparents, and others, as we all waited for the next amazing and unexpected results to his, to each of his tricks. It might be noted that this family event was very well-attended. The store was packed. There were no armed policemen hovering over the people inside or out of the store. There were no massive trucks being used as barriers that unquestionably could not be crossed. The atmosphere was joyful. It was fun-filled. No one was arrested. Compare this family event to the Drag Queen Show exhibited over the weekend. I have a picture, a barrier set up of heavy equipment forming a blockade. What was the city expecting? An army of an AR-15 armed, an army of AR-15 armed policemen, both inside and outside the event, keeping everyone safe. Why? Again, what was the city expecting? And was this protection all funded by the taxpayers? Here's a picture of some of the talent that was exposed. Someone from the Pride Movement standing on her, his head, partial buttocks exposed. And the booth titled, "The Sisters of Perpetual Indulgence," which Gino had referenced. And then there was money. For some reason, children were moved to put money in the hands of the Drag Queens. And why the red bag? Isn't this the practice using in adult strip clubs? We have three children and six grandchildren, and over the years, attended many children's events. I don't ever recall my children being recruited to give the show money as personnel walked among the people with hands extended. And why the arrests of young men? Oh, here's one more. More money.
Mrs. Koffeld, please try to, your time went off, so please try to wrap up.
Okay, okay. I'm almost done. And why the arrests of young men with two, three armed police escorting them out of the park? They were removed and taken to a cement building northeast of the park. And a picture of a teenage girl holding up her hands, being escorted by policemen, the building where their barbecue lunch was set up. I think these arrests need to be investigated. What did all of these-
Hey, Mark, how far over are we right now? All right, could we cut that down, please?
Okay, I guess I can't finish. I'm disappointed.
Thank you, Mrs. Koffeld. Mark?
Andy Schuder? Andy, maybe I'm pronouncing it wrong. S-C-H-U-D-E-R? Schuler.
Hi, my name is Andy Schuler. I'm also known by my drag performance name, Andy with an I. I was the hostess and the producer of both drag shows and the Drag Queen Storytime at Pride Plus this weekend. To a lot of children like myself, I didn't find a lot of spaces as a child that would accept me. I found a lot of bullying and ostracization from kids in my school and adults in my community. And the first time I was really ever able to let loose and feel like I could be free was at a Pride event. And now, being a performer, doing these shows, gives me the opportunity to teach kids lessons like self-acceptance, and pride, and love, and confidence. I am not here to destroy the children of your community. I am a child of your community. I attend your schools. I go to your churches. I shop at your stores. I support your local businesses and your food pantries. I'm not here to destroy your children. The only thing that's doing that is the hatred and ignorance from the adults like you. That's it.
Sue German?
Hello, I'm Sue German. My husband and I moved to this community about a year and a half ago. We left Madison, Dean County, and here we are in Watertown. Last year, we were aware of the Pride picnic. Did not realize there was gonna be the Drag Queen Show. But this year, when we heard about it, we felt we just had to come out and, I guess, maybe you call us protestors. I didn't, I didn't shout at anybody, didn't holler at anybody. In fact, most of us, I think, prayed in groups. Saw a lot of people praying. And I, I mean, to have the Pride picnic is fine, but the Drag Queen is an adult entertainment. And I'm sorry that this young man is caught up in that. If he's not an adult, I'm just concerned, 'cause we did see the show, and how he was acting, and it just, it seemed very inappropriate for children. So, I also was aware, I didn't realize that you could rent the whole park. I don't know if that's something new, or if there's, we heard that there was a special permit that I think the mayor approved. So, well, you're, you're, you say you can't contort, but you're shaking your head. So, you're answering me. I, I too wanna know exactly what this cost- I, I too, want to know exactly what this cost the community for the things that we saw, for the barricades. We went down the night before to pray, as a group, over the area. And in shock, looked around, as we saw trucks and barriers, and we weren't sure who was going to be allowed in, or where, or whatever. So, but yes, I agree with a lot of what was said here in the community. I'm a Christian. My husband and I are both, and we just want the community to be a safe place. And adult entertainment, drag shows, do not belong in our parks, in a public area. Thank you.
Mary Patzer.
I'm going to make this real short. Mary Patzer, I live in Watertown, Wisconsin. And I just wanted to voice my opposition also to what happened on Saturday at Riverside Park. I believe that to advertise an event as a kids' dance party and drag contest, that is grooming, and you will never convince me that it is not. My moral compass just tells me this is wrong. And, you know, I do not hate LGBTQ people. I would never do anything mean to them. And I just feel that, you know, if that's what they want to do, they should do it in their own clubs, and make sure minors are not there. There are many states right now that are not allowing drag dances in front of minors. So, you know, we're not that crazy to object to this. And I think that, as our common council, you need to take into account the moral sensitivities of your constituents. And I also felt that, I don't know what this cost the taxpayers, but I think the Unity Project should get a bill, because we should not have to pay for this. The police presence, the barricades that were up, I'm sure the number is astronomical. And I just plead with you not to snicker at those who have moral reasons to object to this, because my moral sensitivities are not wrong. This is plain and simply grooming of children, and it has to stop. We cannot allow this in Watertown. Thank you.
Marcus Schrader.
Guys, I hope you're all doing good tonight. I just wanted to ask a simple question. I know, you know, a Nazi group showed up at the event Saturday, and people were talking about that, and I just wanted for all of us to really think about this. What's wrong with Nazism? Like, seriously, what's wrong with Nazism? Because imagine for a moment that there is no God above us, no hell below us, no heaven to live for, as John Lennon wanted to imagine. If we are truly the result of evolved startups, and our ancestors were fish, and we're the descendants of monkeys, then where do we find our value as human beings? What's wrong with Nazism unless a few understands that the God of Scripture says that we are made in His image? And so, to murder innocent people is a violation to God's commands. As a Christian, I can say that Nazis, what the Nazis did in Nazi Germany was completely horrific, and that they should have been resisted. In fact, the number-one people group that resisted the Nazis were Christians. And the reason why, the reason why, was because they had a worldview that says that people are made in God's image, and that they have worth and value. That's why Nazism is wrong. But if we're going to reject the Christian worldview, then we can't hold on to the fruit that comes from the Christian worldview while denying the actual foundation. Intolerance is an interesting word. Tolerance, intolerance, hatred, love, bigotry, things like that. Because really, every culture has something that it's intolerant towards, and something that it's tolerant of. I mean, there are things like murder, and rape, and, and, you know, stealing, and just crimes, that we are intolerant towards as a society. And so, every society has something it's intolerant towards. The question is just, what is our object of intolerance, and what is our object of tolerance? When I showed up Saturday, all I did was read from Scripture. On the sidewalk, I read from the Bible, Galatians. And by the way, I wasn't reading Romans 1. I wasn't reading any passage that spoke against homosexuality or anything like that. I was reading a passage from the Bible about love. And I was arrested. No reason, not given any warning, not told anything about my amplification, needed to be turned down. I was arrested and taken into custody, simply for reading the Bible on the sidewalk. You see, as we've become more and more tolerant of sexual immorality in our culture, we've become more and more intolerant towards Christian morality. And the more we become intolerant towards Christian morality, the more we're going to see lawlessness in our streets. The more we become intolerant of Christian morality, the more we're going to see Nazis. The more we're going to see people who don't hold to a Christian worldview, who think that everybody is a result of animals, and therefore, if we are animals, then why can't we just act like animals? We were called a hate group. We were told that we don't want to understand the other side, and I just want to set the record straight. I am more than happy to have that conversation with the other side. I did speech and debate throughout high school, and one of the things that we were taught in debate is that you can't make an argument for your side until you're able to make the argument for the other side. I've sat down and had hours of discussions with LGBTQ activists. I completely understand the other side. I want to understand the other side. But Drag Queens twerking on kids in lingerie is unacceptable, and that's something that we have to notice as a culture. We can have our disagreements, but there comes a time when we have to understand that we are all going to stand before God one day, and we're going to have to give an account for what we have done with the children in our society, the innocent minds, and the children who deserve to be protected. Thank you.
Bo Durand. Oh, sorry, I didn't see anyone moving. Hey, before you speak, I just want to mention, I know it's hard not to speak at people that have spoken. I think it just serves us all best if the people that are presenting just speak to the elected body, and try not to pick people out in the crowd.
Well, I'm very nervous right now, so I will be just speaking to my phone. But anyways, I'll also be as quick as possible. I grew up here in Watertown, and I was raised by lesbian moms. It's me, my two moms, and my sister at home. And I was surrounded by love in my house. It was very wonderful. But the only problem with that is that when I left my house, I had to pretend like I didn't have two moms, and it was for the safety of myself, and my sister, and my moms themselves. They told me, "People can hurt you, people can hurt us if they know that you have lesbian moms." And I remember growing up and going to all these different Pride events as a kid, and it was the one place that my family and I felt we could be whole, that we didn't have to hide anything from anybody. And I really loved going to these events as a kid, and I remember seeing my very first Drag Queen and being like, "I can't wait till I can do makeup as good as she can." And as I kept growing up, and as we started being a little bit more queer-positive in this town, and we had the first Pride at the park, I started to get a little bit of hope for the families who are now starting out, like mine, because we have a lot of other queer parents in Watertown who are looking to have kids, or who have already started having kids, or who have kids. Lost my train of thought. But the point I'm trying to make is that I grew up in fear for my family, and I want the people who are having families like mine, or already have families like mine, to not grow up with that fear. So, City of Watertown, I would just like to ask if you could please let us have our events, and let us do our thing, and just please, like, keep keeping us safe. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Sorana Stolar.
Hi, I'm also from Watertown. There's just a couple of things I want to say, because I don't need to say things over again that have been said. But the other, the community that, every time we stand up, we're standing up, like a lot of people said, "We're not standing against gays, we're not against gays, we don't hate gays." We are standing for the children, and that this is grooming, and what happened on Saturday is all grooming, and for the pedophiles, and it's not okay. And every time, we were not yelling at them, we were not screaming at them, we were holding signs that said, "Protect the children," and not in our community. We were not hateful. I did not see a lot of hate on our side. I saw a lot more hate from their side towards us, because we were saying that grooming children is not okay. Every time you try to bring up this point, that the underlying of their community is this, they say we're hateful and we're bigotry, we're not linking them, we're linking the foundation of these things. I just wanted to say that I read some things about who is considered the godfather of queer theory, and I might pronounce his name wrong, but it's folk cult, and who argued for the eradication of the age of consent laws down to the age of an infant, folk cult. Who is the author of founding, of the founding document of queer theory? Gail Rubin. What is 50%? 50% is the amount of their article, the founding doctrine, or the founding document of the queer theory, that was in defense of pedophilia, specifically quoting boy lovers and men who F you, you know what, boys, or, yeah, boys. Another question I found is, who is the most famous queer theorist of today? The answer is Judith Butler. And, oh, I don't have my phone. Can you bring my phone? If you guys look into Judith Butler, look at some of their quotes. I won't take all the time to read it, but I will tell you that there's a lot of quotes that are disgusting, that probably I shouldn't even read here online, because they're so disgusting. They want to have sex with our kids, that's what they're trying to do. I'm not against what people want to do in their homes. I'm not out there hating on people when I run into people that are of a different persuasion. I can have conversations with them, I can sit and have lunch with them, I work with some people. But when we're talking about Drag Queens, and people walking around in outfits that should not be around children, and this is geared toward children, we have a problem, and you guys all need to look at these things. You need to look into what the queer agenda is, and stop this in our community. You have to. We are asking for this. We are your people, and we're asking for this, and you represent us. And there's a lot more of us.
He's coming.
Yeah, I'm Greg DeMette in Watertown. I really didn't plan on saying anything. I usually don't speak. I particularly more like to ask questions, like, "How could you guys let this happen?" It's not a surprise what was going to happen. And the way things always seem to get twisted around, I hear a lot about hate, and inclusion, exclusion, and all this stuff, and that's got nothing to do with it. In my opinion, it just has to do with the grooming of the kids. Drag Queens and all that stuff has been around forever. In our day, if you wanted to go see, you just go to the bar, that's fine. But not kids. I mean, how, I don't see, I see if I could ask a question, I'd say, "Who okay's this? You know, is it you, is it you, is it you? Is it all of you? Who votes for this? Do we? Do we get to say in it? Is it the majority? Or are you guys just deciding, hey, we don't want to fight this? But if we did fight it, and even if they took us to court, I would pay, to help pay the attorney fees, to fight this stuff, instead of just caving on everything. And again, it has, it has nothing to do with gays. Nothing at all. I have friends that are gay. It's nothing to do with that, I'm fine with that. It's the whole LGBTQ thing, either they try to brainwash people that you have to accept everything, and not just, you know, if you don't believe in everything, you don't believe in yourself if you're gay. And that makes, in my opinion, that makes it hard for the really, the real gay people. So...
Sarah. You got it.
We weren't supposed to do that, right?
Yep, no, I got, I got it, I got it. We just have to make sure that we don't comment in the audience. I just want to make sure that everyone has their opportu...
Amen.
Well, I wanted to say anything, but I had a breakdown just before I came up here, and I just had to say something. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dan, I'm from Watertown. I guess what I got to ask is, all you people here, why didn't you guys bring your kids down to this festival and let them see what is not right? What they're learning in school, and you guys are trying to push that agenda in the schools? That's not good for the kids. You're grooming them for the wrong thing. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Before I close public comment, I just want to check in. We don't have any other slips up front, so if anyone else would like to comment, now is the time.
I'd like to comment. Can I comment?
You definitely can, sir. If I can get you to fill out a form after, I'd appreciate it.
I'm crippled, so, you know, I'm old and crippled, but I'm sanctified, all right? I'm going to heaven when I die. Now, I come from Birmingham, Alabama, and I guess you can hear some of the southern language of mine, but let me say this here. The gospel is not hate speech. Them demons got these peoples running around here talking about somebody hate them. The gospel have called us to go and make disciples, turning people's hearts and minds to a Christ who have died and shed His blood, that they might come to know Him and be saved before death get to them. We all going to leave this place, I just had a sister not too long, died in her sleep. So we don't know when that hour or that day come, in 1945, the United States dropped a bomb on Himichigan and Nagasaki. Sixty thousand peoples went into eternal torment if they didn't have Christ in one moment. Nagasaki, forty thousand, went into eternal torment if they didn't have Christ. The Jews is the living proof of the Bible today. That's where we get our Bible from, the Jews, all those ones who don't believe in the Bible. We got bombs now that is ten times more powerful than that, and these are some perilous days. This LGBTQ, as well as these abortion, is anti-family. No nation can survive killing off and destroying their offsprings. If we are not killing our family inside the womb, we are killing them outside the womb, perverting them. They have no everlasting life. So I'm just trying to encourage you, stop this anti-family agenda that LGBTQ, the Democrats' agenda has for this nation. I'm African-American, my peoples come out of slavery. This is the best nation that ever was on the planet Earth. Christ ruled here. I thank God for this nation. I got saved through this nation. As bad as slavery was for us, we got saved through it, so it was some good in it. So let me encourage this little, small town. I'm from Racine, and I have an organization called Terry One Hour, and we minister. Even though some people call it protest, our job is to go out and minister to the laws. We don't hate phonocaters, we don't hate adulterers, we don't hate liars, we don't hate thieves, and this place is full of a lot of them. And we definitely don't hate homosexuals. We have been called to save them from the great wrath to come. God bless you all, and thank you.
Last call for anybody else that would like to comment?
Hello, I'm Trent Sister. I also grew up in Watertown my entire life, and, you know, they talk a lot about grooming, but I remember a lot of things from my childhood. I was raised evangelical Christian my entire life, and I got asked lots of things that I don't think should be asked of children. I got asked, when I was seven years old, if someone came up to you and said, "Do you believe in God?" Or, "I'll shoot you in the head if you say no." I had to say, "Yeah, I'll say yes," so that I get shot. Like, that screws you up as a kid, like, there's a whole bunch of stuff, you know? Purity culture and stuff, like, inherently sexualizes children, so you're all worried about gay people and trans people sexualizing children. But like, why was I worried as a child about getting married because I didn't think I would be good enough to have sex with? Like, it's just, there's a lot of stuff that's like, bad on your side, and bad on, bad, but like, I'm bad at public speaking, but... But like, I'm bad at public speaking, but it's just, I feel like I was groomed as a kid by the church to think certain things, and it really messed up my entire life. Like, I didn't know how to critically think, so I did poorly in school because I didn't know how to think about things without the answer just being God. Like, it's just frustrating to see people I grew up with or my relatives, and it's just, I feel like I don't exist as a person to those people anymore because I'm gay and I support trans people. So it's, it's just a lot of, I don't know, I'm bad at talking. It's just, it sucks to see a city you grew up in come out in droves to not support you when you had never really had any support to begin with. So it just, you know, if this was happening when I was a teenager, I'm pretty sure I would be dead by now. I asked my mom, I said, would you rather have a dead kid or a gay kid? And I, why do I have to think about that? That's the message you're sending, is like, I would rather have a dead kid than a gay kid, or I'd rather have a dead kid than a drag queen kid. Like, it's just, it's not good, so.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to comment? And I do want to open it up. Online mainly looks like our city team and one of our older people, but if, if anyone would like to comment online, or in the room. All right. I'm going to close public comment. We do have a couple of public hearings this evening. So our first public hearing is to amend section 550-131.1A, print two. This is to allow for the number of permitted electronic message signs to be in accordance with section 550-132 permitted sign rules. I'm going to open that public hearing. If anyone would like to comment, you can come to the microphone. Give them, give the room a moment to clear. You want to talk about electronic message signs? I did ask him to fill a form out. Can we, can we get a form to those last two people? It was the African-American gentleman and then the person with pink hair. That shouldn't be in the public comment record. No, I'm the one who's saying it. All right, I'm going to close that public hearing, and I'm going to wait to open the next one. Do you want to see if they can help people get out of this room? Do you like that? Okay. Is everyone okay with me proceeding? You can hear me okay? All right, I am going to go to our next public hearing. This is to amend section 550-131.1A, print three, print A. This is to clarify the size of electronic message signs that are allowed. I will open that public hearing if anyone would like to comment. All right, seeing none, we'll close that public hearing. Our next is a public hearing to amend section 550-132. This is on the table of 550-132A, print one. This is to clarify the amendment section to 550-131.1A, print two, and 550-131.1A, print three, print A, in the table. I will open that public hearing. Again, if anyone would like to comment, you can come to the microphone. All right, seeing none, we'll close that public hearing. And then our last public hearing this evening pertains to 621 Bernard Street. This is a rezoning request from General Business to General Business Zoning District and TR6, Two-Family Residential, Residential Zoning District to Central Business, Central Business Zoning District for a proposed new fire station. I'll open that public hearing. Oh, we can't close the doors. Rebel Tina. All right, seeing none, we'll close that public hearing. All right, you guys, let's move to reports. You will have the Housing Authority minutes from May 18th, the Board of Health minutes from May 23rd, the Finance Committee minutes from July 10th, and Public Works from July 25th. Yes, sir?
I'm here, I'm speaking to Alder Smith.
Can you turn on your mic? I'm sorry, I legitimately couldn't hear you.
Hey, there we go. I owe an apology to Alder Smith. I left him out of the Public Works meeting. He was there.
All right, so we will make, we'll make that change to the July 25th Public Works minutes. Anybody else on those? Mr. Blankey.
I have a question also on the Public Works minutes, but we also have a resolution on the same item up tonight, so I guess the preference is where the comments come, where the question comes.
Does it pertain to the highway functional classique?
Yes, it does.
That's going to be, we're likely to have a motion to table it. We didn't get the map in, from the state.
Then I would like to ask a question now.
Okay.
Basically, what it comes down to is the area of Gypsy Road and Horseshoe Road. The FHWA suggested Gypsy Road and West Street be classified as locals instead of collectors. And what we're choosing to do is to change Gypsy Road to a local and maintaining West Street between East Horseshoe and Gypsy as a collector. I'm just wondering what impact that will have on truck traffic in that area and basically the overall consequence of maintaining one as a collector but not the other, because there's already a lot of heavy truck traffic that does take that little shortcut down to Gypsy Road over to Highway 26. So I'm wondering if it wouldn't be in our best interest to change East Horseshoe to a local road to prevent truck traffic from using that area.
I'm not sure.
Okay, I will, I tried to jot that down the best I could. I will have engineering follow up with you, if that's okay. Any other comments or questions on the minutes? Mr. Blankey?
I think I have a few related to the finance, and I hope everybody had a chance to look at those things, because there were a couple of items that are of wide interest here, including basically explicitly allocating construction management services. And related to the fire station, we also, as a finance committee, felt that it was important with regard to some of the concerns that were raised regarding to timing of fire stations around there, that we include emergency vehicle preemption solution. So essentially, that's the light-changing technology to make sure that intersections are as clear as possible when emergency vehicles come through. There's also a reference here with regard to the restroom projects. So I think people who are getting questions on that should take a look at that as well. And then one that I'm very happy to talk about is, again, something that I know Alder Person, Smith, and I have done a couple of things on the side, and there've been a lot of people in the city. Mayor has been a part of this. There's been a lot of people in Public Works and other ones. And that's basically the full repair of the Riverside Park, stone walls and bridges. And you'll see in the finance notes that there was a donation of $160,000 from the Watertown Area Community Foundation. And I do advise everyone, if you have a chance, to look at the excellent article that was penned by Tom Schultz, who was, of course, chairman of the Riverfest Celebration Committee for many years and continues on at the Watertown Area Community Foundation, where he talks about reinvesting profits from the Riverfest Festival back into the city in a variety of ways. And a few of these mentioned here were the funds that you see mentioned here, the $160,000. I probably should say, for full disclosure, there's also a piece in here where there was $75,000 transferred to the new Riverfest organization. I'm the president of that. That's going to help continue operations in the future, as well as donation to the Educational Foundation of Watertown. So there is a lot of great charitable work that's being done as a result of the funds that were gathered through that organization. And we're extremely happy that there was a partnership established between the city and an organization that is a huge advocate of that park, that surrounding, and just, we were able to get a whole lot accomplished.
Thank you.
So thank you, everybody who contributed.
Thank you. Anyone else on minutes? All right, then let's move to the accounts payable.
I would so move.
Motion by Mr. Mouldenhauer, second by Mr. Wetzel. Comments or questions on the accounts? Ms. Davis.
I enjoyed seeing the payment for the minnows we've purchased to control the Daphne. I think that's a great solution. I would love a tour of all that if anyone wanted to invite us.
You're invited. You're invited. He would love to give you a tour. We're actually planning to do some kind of PR around that in our fall kind of cycle of the Daphne and Magna bloom and bringing in the minnows. We just got the approval of our permit after many, many months of working with the DNR. So you email, if you email Pete, I guarantee he'll, he'll oblige that. And if anyone else is interested, it's a very interesting three-hour tour. It takes a bit of time, but it's very, well, he has a short version, but it, the long version is worth it. He's, I know he's happy to provide tours for that. Anyone else on the accounts payable? Megan. Mouldenhauer.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Blankey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Motion passed nine to zero. Very good. Under miscellaneous business, you have the payroll summaries from June 28th to July 11th, and the June credit card purchases over $10,000. Questions from anybody on those? Okay, let's move to ordinances. Our first is ordinance 23-18. This is an ordinance to amend section 410-52C, print one, possession of alcohol beverages on public ways of the City of Watertown General Ordinances. This is here from Ms. Davis and Public Safety and Welfare on its second reading. Ms. Davis.
I'll move to approve ordinance 23-18.
Motion by Davis, second by Mr. Blankey. Any questions on this one? Megan. Davis.
Aye.
Blankey.
Aye.
Board.
Aye.
Barts.
Aye.
Blankey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Mouldenhauer.
Aye.
Motion passed nine to zero. Very good. Our next is ordinance 23-19. This is an ordinance to amend sections 550-25F, print two, print B, 550-53C, print one, print D, and 550-105J, print one, and 550-132, the table, 550-132A, print three, of the City of Watertown General Code. I know you all are looking up those citations right now. This is here from me and the Plan Commission on a positive recommendation for its first reading. Mr. Blankey.
Make motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Blankey, second by Mr. Barts. Discussion on this one? Mr. Schmidt.
Businesses then, not private residencies, if I read it correctly?
Brian, are you available to answer that question? Or zoning administrator?
Yes, what was the, I couldn't quite hear the question.
Oh, sorry. This is only going to apply to businesses and not private residencies, if I'm reading this correctly, correct?
Which party are you referring to?
Yeah. Can you, so the first one, like, 550-25F is residences or twin homes? So are you, like, 550-53?
Yes.
Go ahead, whoever I'm cutting off.
Okay, then I guess that refers to residential, twin homes.
Brian, do you, will you step through, would you step through each one? So 550-25F, you just said is for residences. How about 550-53C?
That is for personal storage and to basically space them out in the General Business District with a, none that can be closer than 3,500 feet to another one.
Very good. And the next?
The next is, is basically to deal with the curb cuts and allowing people to work with the city engineer to determine the width of the curb cut versus having to go through a, a conditional use process. And the last one is, just add a couple of miscellaneous sign categories that apparently were omitted when the ordinance was adopted last year.
Thank you. Helpful, Mr. Schmidt?
Mostly.
Okay.
I'm still a little fuzzy on, it would be section 550-105J, print one, regards to, I guess, the curb cutting. Is this talking about existing driveways when a street or curb is redone, or if a new construction is done to update an existing driveway or to work on a property?
Brian?
This is to, to exceed the, the minimums or to the maximum curb cuts, so they can, they can work with the city engineer if there's just cause to have a wider than required, wider than allowed curb cut.
If I may, you can do that now under a conditional use permit. We're saving someone applying for a conditional use permit by making this change. They would be able to just essentially appeal to the Public Works, or work with the Public Works Director. If they don't like that answer, they can appeal that up to the Plan Commission. So a, a conditional use permit, I believe, is $500. Is that right?
Correct.
So we're saving people that, that administrative process and cost.
And there's still the checking balances where, to avoid the director overstepping the bounds, the, the commission itself can then make the final ruling.
Yes, there's an appeal to the Plan Commission.
Yeah. I just wanted to understand that part. Thank you.
Anybody else on these?
Mayor, can I ask a question, please?
Yes, you scared me.
Sorry.
That's okay.
What's the magic of, what's the magic of 3,500 feet in section two?
Brian?
Okay, I guess it's, it's the same measurement that we use for payday loan, so we just use the same, the same language, basically. It was to separate, there's, there's language in there to separate payday loan establishments from congregating in one area, and we use the same language to basically do the same for personal storage.
Anybody else on these?
Well, that's a, is that assuming that there is, is that assuming there's not already a storage facility in the General Business District?
There are several already. And what this does is it says that anyone who wants to build another one in General Business has to be 3,500 feet from any other personal storage facility. Whereas if you do it in, in a general industrial, you can do them anywhere. It only applies to general business. It was, it was, it was a kind of a lesser of two evils versus just outright removing them from general business, which would cause other problems.
Other questions for a zoning administrator? Megan. Blankey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Mouldenhauer.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Blankey.
Aye.
Board.
Aye.
Barts.
Aye.
Motion passed nine to zero. Very good. Mr. Smith?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules that we might have a second vote on this ordinance this evening.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blankey. It's not debatable, but we do need two-thirds. So Megan, will you take the role on that? Smith.
Aye.
Schmidt.
No.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Mouldenhauer.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Blankey.
Aye.
Motion passed eight to one. Very good. Is there a motion then for this, sir?
Motion for the adoption on the second reading of ordinance 23-19.
Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Wetzel for the second reading. Additional comments or questions? I can provide some factual context.
I have a question. You can let me know, yes or no, if I can ask it.
You can.
Okay. Why the rush? Why the suspension of rules?
Sure, I can provide some, some factual context. We have a developer that is waiting on this passage, and we had an error internally where this did not get on last council meeting's agenda. So that's the factual answer.
That would have been helpful to put out ahead of time or include with packet, because I'm not a fan of just jumping rules just because we can.
Sure, understood. Anybody else on this one? Megan. Smith.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Mouldenhauer.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Blankey.
Aye.
Board.
Aye.
Barts.
Aye.
Blankey.
Aye.
Motion passed nine to zero. Thank you. Let's go to resolutions. The first is exhibit 9420, excuse me, 9524. This is a resolution to approve the Watertown Southwest Side Conceptual Neighborhood Plan. This is here from me and the Plan Commission with a positive recommendation. Mr. Blankey. This is a resolution to approve the Watertown Southwest Side conceptual neighborhood plan. This is here from me and the Plan Commission with a positive recommendation. Mr. Lampy?
I would so move.
Motion by Mr. Lampy, second by Mr. Barts. We do have some representatives here from the foundation, um, and some other consultants, if anyone has any questions. I told them I didn't think we needed the presentation. We've seen it, seen it before, but I'm sure they're willing to present anything if you need them to. So any comments or questions from anyone? Mr. Schmidt?
I do remember the presentation. It was very well done and articulated well. Um, I was also in the impression this was going to be something in the future down the road, not like immediately this summer that we're voting on. Cause I've had a lot of questions and I haven't had enough time to get accurate information, cause I didn't have, I didn't know what it was like to disclose in regards to potential operations and conceptual rendering. So although I like the idea, I'm not a fan of it being rushed through like this. Cause there's a lot of moving pieces of change, and so I thought there's more time to work with some ideas that may have changed it. So that's just my concern, and this is a speed.
Understood. Anybody else on this one?
Mayor?
Yes, where was that? Mr. B, Mr. Mildenhauer?
Uh, just a question again. Um, in these proposed developments, um, in the past, we've always kept A1 and art, or I should say R1, R2, the different things, um, together in groups. In other words, the zoning was always connected. The R1s would be a section here, maybe R2 over here. And this is going to be a situation, we're going to be mixing different types of building, and I'm still not sure about that.
Would you like a comment from the designer on that?
Yes.
Sir?
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, good evening. Brian Munson with Vandewall Associates, uh, here on behalf of the Greater Watertown Community Health Foundation. Um, as far as the process this goes through, so think of this as the roadmap, uh, but not the destination. There will be several steps down the line. Uh, one, two very important steps would address zoning and, uh, plating, so creating the parcels and creating the zoning that would facilitate the implementation of the project. That will have to come back in front of this body at a later date. But the overall concept of the plan is to create an intermixing of land uses that support each other, uh, through guidelines on character, uh, by common setbacks and massing, uh, to increase the opportunity for housing to interact with each other intentionally. The mechanism most likely that will be needed to move this forward is going to be probably a planned unit development, which would be a master plan approach that would address all of the components within the neighborhood and how they interact with each other. Uh, so in all likelihood, it would be one zoning approach, but that hasn't been determined at this time. There could also be elements, uh, that could meet existing zoning districts that could be interwoven. Uh, but again, all of that, uh, will come forward in front of this, this body, uh, as a future application. Uh, the goal of this project really is to set a framework for discussions that are going to come, so that there's an endorsement by the community in the direction to seek, um, diverse housing in this area that would help guide, uh, the implementation of multiple properties in a way that results in a cohesive neighborhood. Uh, but that indicates the need, uh, or starting to addressing the need, uh, for both housing attainability within the community and housing diversity within the community. Um, so there's, there's a lot of steps that will come after this, uh, and that we appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, uh, to take that first step, and we look forward to working closely with everyone to answer those very specific concrete questions that are only answered at zoning stage or the plating stage.
And one other thing?
Yes, please.
Um, I also want to see the layouts, the amount of land, the size of the building and things like that, because there was always a situation in Watertown that I know of. If you have a building of a certain size on land, you're able to build up to a certain percentage of that land use, or that your land. And I'm just wondering if opening that thing up over there, if that's going to change the city's way of doing business in the rest of the city?
Well, uh, to speak to the planned unit development approach, um, having used that in a bunch of different communities, it's a site-specific, um, negotiation for zoning approvals on that parcel only, and would need to meet some standards, uh, that are set by the city in terms of justifications to achieve that. Uh, and furthermore, would have to be further vetted, uh, with this body, with the Plan Commission, uh, through a public process to adopt that. Um, it is indicative of some development patterns that haven't historically, haven't, haven't recently historically been done in the community, but as we looked across the balance of the community, there's good examples where this already exists. It just hasn't been accessed or used in many, many years. Um, and so the goal of this, as we move into that next stage, is to deliver more information. We would need to set those standards very succinctly. Uh, we included additional information in the packet, uh, as an indication of the direction the project is designed to go to, but in no way does adoption of this packet codify, uh, those components, uh, specifically to this property. Uh, it's included for information, so everybody's clear when we're talking about the different, uh, land uses that are embedded in the concept. That's the direction that we were looking at, but it doesn't, uh, preclude the need to come back, uh, with a formal zoning application to set those, uh, in concert with plating.
Okay. One other question for the city attorney. Um, can you just zone that one particular area a certain way and then exclude it from the rest of the city? Or would, would that have to be? Because, like I said, in the past, from what I understood, if there's a certain size, like, say, a house on a, on a plot of land, and you can only build up to so, so much land usage. Now, you said, can you just restrict that particular area for zoning to do it that way, or would that open up the rest of the city also?
Using a pod, you would be able to designate the area and create special zoning requirements or restrictions or rules for that specific area that's designated.
So you could do it legally, and the rest of the city would not be involved?
Correct. The rest of the city would still result to the standard zoning code, but this would just have, uh, excerpt within the zoning code as far as what the rules are for building or plating lots within that area.
Okay.
And do pods have public hearings? Yes? Yeah, so there is a, I, I know that's a, a concern point for you all, at all times, which I appreciate. There is a public hearing process for all planned, planned unit developments. So it has that extra level to, of, uh, of sharing information with the community and giving us an opportunity to hear it back. Yeah. Ms. Davis?
I appreciate the desire to move forward with wisdom and with care, but we do have a crisis. I know so many people who have money to spend and cannot find a house in a bid and lost over and over again. And we talk about, um, increasing the population of Watertown. We, we can only do that if we add, not if we're just swapping out people, you know, and houses. And in doing that, then we're increasing the budget. So I am enthusiastic about just taking another step. And there's still safeguards, and there's still ways where we can monitor that this turns out in a way that's definitely favorable for the City of Watertown, but it's taking that next step.
Thank you. Mr. Lampy, did you have your hand up at one point?
On this one, actually, maybe.
Oh, let me move on.
I don't think I did.
No, okay. Mr. Schmidt?
I'm looking at the map, and the thing, the question I asked last time, I, I didn't see the answer to in the report. I might have missed it. Um, have you gotten those water sample tests back from the DNR to determine the, um, water table and impact of this construction with the wetlands that are there? Cause I believe it was you mentioned, or maybe a colleague, that if the farming stops in that parcel, the water table then resurfaces to a higher degree, creating more of a marshland in certain areas according to your map. So my concern is the environmental impact on the water level and the table in that area, and how that's going to impact watershed. That's one of my issues.
Sure. A couple of things on that. Uh, so the design of the neighborhood is based on county, available county data, including DNR indicated wetlands and soil conditions. That's not a proxy or replacement for onsite soil investigations. But in a process standpoint, that typically occurs as we get into the next stage of plating and zoning, where we are looking at the specific placement of lot lines and specific placement of infrastructure and buildings. However, we did anticipate and have looked very closely at the site and recognize that there are environmental systems present onsite, whereas additional investigation will be needed to verify, uh, including a wetland survey, uh, including, uh, soil, uh, condition evaluations on a specific basis, so that we can understand the implementation of the plat, uh, would meet the standards of the city and reflect the, the existing conditions on the site. There are areas on the site that indicate wetlands would occur if the farming stopped, and we have largely stayed out of those areas because we recognize that if you stop farming, wetlands come up, that those are areas where development should not go. Uh, and so we've tried to set those aside to the extent possible, given the information that we have at this time. Again, the next steps this will go through is going to be developer recruitment, which will be followed up with zoning and plating submittals, which would include and address those very specific items that would have to go through, uh, review by the city, as well as the DNR for any potential impacts on the existing, uh, what looks to be a creek onsite, as well as the potential for wetlands. So there's a lot of detailed questions that still are yet to come. Uh, this is the overall guidance for the development of the area, uh, and certainly not the last stop. Uh, and so we look forward, we'll, I agree. We, we don't want to put development where development shouldn't be, uh, and the best way to do that is to do very specific site investigations as part of a development application.
And I do have one follow-up related to it. So with this development, does it address the increased burden on Milford from the railroad, basically from the railroad tracks where it crosses at the point, all the way till exit city limits in regards to increased traffic, parking? Um, at one point, we mentioned that park across street not being touched, but the parking already is excessive. And so how is that going to be rectified with this potential development? Or is it covered?
So he's alluding, there's, um, soccer fields that are heavily used on Sundays and they park on the road. Uh, yeah, okay.
Yes, so the design of the neighborhood anticipates multiple connections and extension of the street grid that's west of Milford into the site wherever possible. Uh, by, and that's intentional, because we recognize that we want to try to distribute traffic entry points onto that in a logical manner and not funnel them to one point in any specific location. Uh, as far as the overall cross-section in the future of Milford, that would have to be evaluated as part of, uh, a proposal. Uh, and if necessary, if there needs to be widening of that facility or other, uh, traffic control devices put on there, stop signs, lights, any of those components, uh, would be evaluated at a time of plat submittal. Uh, but we do believe that there's ample, uh, capacity on Milford, uh, and by utilizing the street extensions and the intersection spacing that we have on there, uh, that it can accommodate, uh, what's being proposed. But again, that'll be a component that would have to be verified, uh, at plating and zoning.
Thank you.
It's a concern with the saying that it can handle it, yet there are certain times during peak usage, it, it's overwhelmed. So adding hundreds of houses potentially and at least that many vehicles, I'm concerned it won't be able to handle it. I'm all for adding housing and, and expanding everything. That's not my position. I just want to make sure we don't miss something and have a law of unintended consequences. Cause that's an issue that government has quite frequently, and I want to try to avoid that. It all costs specifically something to this scale and magnitude. An environmental impact is one of those.
Sure, that makes sense. I, I'll just share, we do have a site plan review process where these exact types of questions are fielded by city staff. So the recreation directors there, public works director, all the people that would say, oh, you know, that development, if you're going to do that development, then we really need to have a, you know, street here or here, or we need to make sure that we then use park dedication fees to improve the parking inside a greenwald. I'm being, making stuff up now. But that site plan review process does give that opportunity for that internal review before anything would then even get to Plan Commission, and then even get to you all here. Yeah, good questions. Mr. Wetzel?
Relative question. Are you familiar with Sun Prairie?
Very familiar, yes.
Are you familiar with the massive development of Bradyan Homes?
Uh, yeah. Up on Costco and, and the theater.
Yep.
You have mixed, you have townhomes, you have single-family. Is that kind of the plan in your mind?
Um, I think the big differential, if you looked up the Reiner-Sprecker Road where the Costco is and headed north, is the, the primary components of land use there is commercial. If you look south, it's Miss Crossing. If you look further north, uh, along Reiner Road into some of the mixed residential pieces, you start to see elements that would apply here, uh, with a common framework being, uh, diverse housing, uh, a focus on the, the house itself and not garages. And so that's orientation of front doors, porches, uh, placement of parking, placement of garages in ways that the streetscape becomes that walkable environment that knits everything together. Those are the components that we see echoed in here, uh, as a mechanism to allow for the incorporation of diverse housing types, uh, but do so in a way that the architecture supports each other and the massing transitions support each other. Uh, so yes, they, Sun Prairie does have a lot of elements, what, outside of Smith Crossing, one of the sites we toured, uh, where they've implemented that over the years. I've been involved with some of them, not all of them, uh, but, uh, I think there's a lot of good examples there. Uh, there are also some lessons that have been applied to this, of lessons learned, where things that were well-intended didn't turn out, uh, because either the architecture didn't deliver, or the guidelines, uh, weren't specific enough to address or preclude issues down the line. And, and that's one of the strengths of the planned unit development, because it is negotiated for a specific project. It offers the ability to put in additional language to address a lot of character elements that otherwise fall into more of the, uh, form-based code approach, as opposed to a linear zoning approach. Uh, and so some of the character components where there were issues, uh, that I see in Sun Prairie and Madison and, and many markets, uh, can be learned from and implemented in ways that can help address that.
It's, it's non-traditional, but all the time is changing from the twenties to the forties, to the eighties to now. But it looks very sharp. That's the concept. Looks, personally it looks very good. And I have one more statement last, uh, last Wednesday at the collective, we had the open house, and, uh, just want to, that's going to be the anchor for the whole project, basically, and just say that Tina Craven and her crew did a fantastic job setting that up, and, uh, there was an excitement last Wednesday afternoon there, all afternoon. So that was good.
Any other comments or questions? These are all good comments. Yes, Mr.?
I'll be brief.
I almost walked you into it.
I, I know. I'm, I'm just really happy to see.
I'm just kidding, go ahead.
I'm just really happy to see this, uh, continue to move along. Um, there's, there's scant mention in here in terms of workforce housing. This really, I am, as far as I can tell, is, is our best shot at establishing a great range of affordable housing options that will hopefully attract people to the community and, and, uh, take, take the jobs that, uh, remain unfilled. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on this one?
Megan? Lampy?
Aye.
Board?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Blanke?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Mildenhauer?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Very good. Thank you guys very much. All right, our next is exhibit 9525. This is a resolution to adopt the updated title, uh, six? Thank you, whoever helped me on that. Uh, plan. This is here from Alderman Schmidt and the Transit Commission. Mr. Schmidt? Motion by Mr. Schmidt, second by Mr. Wetzel. For our newer colleagues on the council, Roman numerals are my Achilles heel. I cannot retain them for the life of me. Went to a Catholic school and I still can't remember. Anybody on this one?
Megan? Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Mildenhauer?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Board?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Blanke?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Very good. Our next is exhibit 9526. This is a resolution to endorse an updated highway functional classification system map for the City of Watertown urban area. This is here from Mr. Wetzel in Public Works. And as I alluded to earlier, we did receive a request. Mr. Barts?
Yeah, I move to table. This resolution is requested by Assistant City Engineer Andrew Byer. Uh, he's planning on bringing it back to the council once he gets an updated map from the DOT.
Thank you. Is there a second to that? Second by Mr. Schmidt. Megan, will you take the role on that?
Barts?
Aye.
Blanke?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Mildenhauer?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Board?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Blanke?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
This is just a grant application, correct?
Yes. The envelope, Megan, do you want to provide some information?
Yep, so they're just working on simplifying the envelope and making it more compliant with the state statute. Plans of color coding them to certain types of absentee voters, like in person, mailed, SVD, things like that are in the works and it's set to be approved on April or August fourth.
And this is allowing us an opportunity to get money from WAC to pay for those envelopes.
Right, we are not allowed to use old envelopes, so to offset those costs, they're providing a sub grant to use.
Will those envelopes be marked with what color they're on for those who are colorblind? I ask because I am partially colorblind.
Oh, no, no, I'm not barking, I was listening, yeah.
Because that's the first time I'm hearing it. So like if they're marked sometimes, like ID changes a certain color and there's an indicator on the ID that says what color it is.
Sure.
So if you can't tell, then you know it's supposed to be this color.
Yes. Megan?
They are labeled also.
With the color. Good question. Anybody else on this one? All those in favor of submitting the grant, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Oops, sorry, Mr. Board. All right, that one carries. Our next opportunity is now for comments and suggestions from citizens present. If anyone would like to comment? Yep, please.
If you haven't met me before, my name is Bentley Alwinio in Watertown, Wisconsin. The Unity Project, as I had mentioned in my earlier comments, is a very radical LGBT group. I do not choose my friends based on gay or straight. I have gay friends. I cannot stand certain straight people, et cetera, et cetera. But I had a conversation at the end of the last city council meeting last year before Pride in the Park, the meeting that had some intensity to it, with Trent Kengas, the founder of Unity Group. And I have sworn affidavit witnesses to this. In the conversation about trans agenda, trans, et cetera, he said, quote, "It's not enough to tolerate. You must affirm. You must agree." Forced affirmation. I'm looking at my phone right now, and that's with regard to the trans agenda. Looking at my phone right now and Virginia parents will face felony charges if they do not affirm their child's gender choice. So we have forced affirmation going on and this is a violation, we're getting into violations of the First Amendment of the Constitution of our constitutional rights. For the attorney, city attorney here, you need to consider that you're working with a group that when you find out what they're all about, they are connected with supporting this type of activity. And that's how that male and other males have ended up in girls locker rooms, pressure and forcing, forcing schools, institutions to open locker rooms and bathrooms to males. So we have constitutional rights and then we have violations of constitutional rights, First Amendment beyond. There's religious rights with parents regarding that. And this city needs to consider, and I'm bringing this forward as a matter of documentation, that you should not be working and allowing groups that have that agenda, have that type of an agenda violating parents' First Amendment rights and other rights, constitutional rights. And there are heavy civil and criminal penalties for people to violate other people's constitutional rights. And the Unity Project and these groups are heavily bent on using bullying and the full force of laws that are against the Constitution to violate people's rights, constitutional rights. And I think the city needs to consider that could end up working with groups like this or allowing groups that are actually very, very hostile to our personal rights. And we have stories that matter, personal stories, we hear them, but it's not okay for those and those may have tremendous importance in those people's lives. I have friends who are gay who have tremendously difficult stories. But I'm bringing it here as a matter of documentation, that the city and the city council needs to be very careful about allowing groups to meet that violate, come into the park that violate people's First Amendment rights. And it cannot soft, troubled stories cannot be allowed to cover the violations of our First Amendment rights as parents and others. And that could be a big issue here. I mean, I suppose, I'm not threatening, but I suppose I could go get constitutional lawyers who know what I'm talking about. I haven't studied constitutional law, but I suppose I could go get that and present to the city and say, you cannot be working with groups that do this. One other thing, if I can have 10 seconds?
Yes.
I don't mean to be mean, but Watertown is getting better. There were young ladies frozen on the intersection out by the bridge with people stalking them, young ladies and young men stalking them out of the park from the trans community. They had to freeze and call in police and wait 45 minutes sitting there in the blaring sun. And the police came, they did a great job and we're very thankful for the police in Watertown and what they did there that day. They sat for 45 minutes waiting for the police, not to be stalked to their car, maybe to be what? Beat up at their house somewhere? Watertown is not getting better. It's getting worse. Dump trucks blocking, blocking roads. Nazis coming in, horrible, you know?
Thank, thank you, sir. Anybody else that would like to comment? And I see just Mr. Board on. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Again, my name is Jim Drenwater, I'm a resident of Watertown. I heard a lot of things tonight and so I would like to give you, while I guess it's a biased opinion or a biased account of the events of Saturday, like, because I am me and I have my own like political leanings and things like that, I'd like to clarify a couple of things. You know, there were talks of children shoving dollar bills in lingerie and people twerking on children in lingerie and I didn't see any of that. I saw several people dressed in really, really nice dresses, you know, pretty, clothing that is nicer than what I wear typically, did cartwheels off of a stage, showed pretty good athleticism, didn't really do anything that was outrageous, you know, threw their hands up a little bit, danced around, you know, similar to like what my kids do. I didn't see anything that I would constitute as grooming and that I think any reasonable person would constitute as grooming. I would like to touch on the word affirm, if I may, for just a moment. The word affirm is defined as to state a fact, assert strongly and publicly, or to offer emotional support or encouragement. That's what affirm means. That's just first thing pops up on Google when you Google affirm. And I think the idea of it's not good enough to just acknowledge, but you must affirm, I think that is pretty well illustrated and one of the speakers that came up tonight said that they don't have a problem with the LGBTQ community, they don't care what people do in their own homes, but they cared a lot when members of the LGBTQ community just got together for an event on Saturday. And people in this room spewed hatred, screamed at my children about how they're going to face judgment, about how they're going to go to hell because of the things that we're doing here. I would call that hatred. I mean yelling from the fence, you know. I think that it's good to remember that there are a lot of different types of people here in Watertown. And I think it's good to give everybody an opportunity to live their life and to do the things that make them comfortable. Some of them really hurt anybody else and I didn't see anyone really get hurt at the Pride event, just like people aren't getting hurt in our churches on Sundays. I don't have a problem with people gathering and talking and sharing their opinion, but I think at the end of the day, we need to keep in mind that just because, you know,